Today's February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, Wasatch School District Board of Education meeting. I'm Board President Tyler Bluth. Let's take if we could just a quick roll call to tell who's here. And then we'll move into a pledge of allegiance given to us by former Board President Tom Hanson.
Tom Hanson, board member.
Kim Dickerson, Vice President.
Tyler Bluth, Board President.
Paul Swett, Superintendent.
Corey Hall, his board member.
Marian B. Allen, board member.
The audience, please rise. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Also like to recognize that Jason Watts is not with us tonight. He is attending function with his wife tonight and so we will excuse him. Let's move into our meeting if we could. We'd like to, I guess we'll start with community comment. First, Stacy, is there, we wanted to do online first or would we like to call? No Zoom comments tonight? If there is a comment tonight, I would love to have you. You have two minutes and we will stop you at that time. We would love to have a comment and you have the time. Any comments? Okay. If not, we will move on. Thank you very much. We'll move to consent items and that have been outlined in our packets. If I entertain a motion for consent items.
I move we approve consent items as outlined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay. Anything else there, guys? Guess we move into our action items portion. And we'd like to give Zach the floor.
Thank you very much. That was quick. I guess the first half of a meeting I've ever been to, so.
I'm known for being quick here.
Hey, I'd like to present to you our proposed capital project list for fiscal year twenty five. So that's starting July first. Do you all have a copy of it or do you want me to? Okay, just making sure. So would you like me to go over each item? Would you like to just look over it and ask questions? What do you prefer? Okay, so Director Kelly and myself and Lynn Thornton, our custodial supervisor, we met with the administrator from each school as well as their custodian. They brought any items they thought they may need for their school to us. We brought things that we thought they may need. You know, we all get together, talk about it. In the end, Sean and Lynn and I kind of sit down and hash out what we think is the priority for this year. We never really take anything off the list. It maybe just gets bumped to the next year. So, you know, if Daniels Canyon thought they needed something this year, we didn't think they did. It's probably going to be on the list next year. So we just kind of sit down with a dollar amount in mind and we get the most important things we can in that amount, so.
Zach, I got a question. Midway Elementary, the secure entry, tell me about that.
So right now when you walk in Midway Elementary, the main door is locked and they have an intercom that they buzz people in. But once you get in that front door, you basically have access to the whole building, right? There's, there's nothing stopping you from going down a hall. So we're going to install a set of doors right as you walk into the left. Like heading towards the cafeteria, there'll be a set of vestibule doors there. And then walking straight in the building, down the hall towards the office door, there'll be another set just past the office door. So they'll buzz people in the outside door. They can go to the office really is the only place they can go to. Cause there is a set of doors, if you turn right, that have just always been propped open. We're going to secure those better than they are now as well as part of this.
Thank you.
So it's just a way to channel people to the office, kind of like we've done at other buildings. Any other questions?
Stacy, can you scroll a little bit? I had a question on walk off mat. What is a walk off mat?
Is that for the high school? So when you first walk in the building, typically the vestibule, you know, in between the set of doors has a certain type of floor covering in there. When you walk in the next set of doors, it's generally on to just tile floor, right? And it's slippery. We put rugs down. So this is just extending that, that special weather resistant carpet fifteen to twenty feet. If you've been to Rocky Mountain, we did that there last year when we replaced their flooring. We extended in the hallways fifteen feet. We plan on doing that at Old Mill as well. That's part of their, I don't have it called out as walk off mat because it's included in their floor covering replacements that we have for there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Zach. This is your summer projects?
Summer and next year, yeah, into this. We're still finishing up last year, so we've got a few this spring coming up to finish up last year's projects, but.
Thanks, Lee. So far the winter has not been like it was.
Been great. Yes, it's been great. We've actually only plowed three times this year, so. I did more than that in one week last year. Okay, well, my, my proposal is that the board accept the proposed capital project list for fiscal year twenty five for the amount of one million forty nine thousand dollars as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, number two, we'd like to hear from our friend Derek, Dr. Derek.
Eric Campbell.
Okay, so the first one I have on here is for a number of years we have not considered a fee adjustment to our preschool. Currently, we charge families a hundred and seventy five dollars a month, which is considerably low. Our costs have gone up. So we are proposing that we raise that twenty five dollars a month to two hundred dollars a month for our families that are full paying. Families that can't pay, we put them on a sliding scale. But, but the overall fee would be two hundred dollars for families that can afford the full amount. So, yeah, that's our request today to the board that we raise that from one seventy five to two hundred for preschool students, monthly fee.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. So the increase, we're still going to have a sliding scale. We'll still have benefits available to employees and their families?
Yeah, all those benefits and, and the sliding scale will still be in place from before.
And just to clarify, the extra twenty five dollars is because of inflationary costs as well?
Yeah.
School districts are not exempt, unfortunately.
Yeah, exactly. And it's been about a decade since.
Clarification question.
Thank you.
And so we have preschool at each elementary.
We do.
Do you have a hard time collecting that, those fees from those families that have their kids in preschool?
No, we typically don't because that sliding scale, if we see a family is struggling, we're able to reach out to them and say, is there anything going on? And sometimes they're able to share with us those, those needs and we accommodate as, as needed.
And if you've done any preschool, two hundred bucks is a pretty good deal in lots of ways.
Yeah.
What out there in the world is, you know, so. Okay, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the preschool fee adjustment for two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five as outlined.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I, did you second that?
Yeah.
I said, oh.
You seconded.
I thought you were asking for someone to say, I seconded your second.
You seconded my second. I was asking for a second and you gave me a second. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And stay right there, you got the next one.
Yeah, next two. So as we discussed in, in the, our study session, this is just us taking an opportunity to kind of streamline our, our policy manual, make it easier for families to, to be able to read and, and find the information they have. The opioid overdose policy is an old one, is now encapsulated in our current medication administration policy. So we would like, we are asking the board to retire our old opioid overdose policy at this time.
Questions?
Just comment that Mary Ann and I are on the policy committee with Eric and we reviewed it and it's all good to go.
Yep.
Thank you for your service.
A lot of time and effort in that, especially on Dr. Campbell's part.
Okay, let's, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, motion to pass policy for, no, removal of policy four twenty opioid, opioid overdose.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So again, this next one, we're asking to retire the medication administration policy since we have a new updated one already on the books. So we're asking that we retire the older medication administration policy four thirty nine.
Okay, questions? No, okay, motion?
Motion to remove, retire policy four thirty nine medication administration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Doctor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steph Dishar.
Our Director of Elementary Education. Yes, I have nothing drug related to speak to you about. I know, sorry. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the trust lands plans, which you know are, you're very familiar with. Every school comes and proposes their trust lands plans to you. Today, what I'm asking you to consider to approve is their final reports, which is they compared their proposed spending against their final spending and then also those final results and those final reports. And so I'm here just to, I think you all got to take a look at them and I've looked at them and just here to ask you to consider to approve those.
So moved. So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have one little tidbit to share with you. So along with the trust lands funds that we have, we also have the T S S A money, which then is turned into a T S S P plan for each of the schools. And we did have a legislative performance auditor who contacted our district and wanted to go and visit two schools here. And the auditor did go and visit Midway Elementary this week or this past week and was scheduled to visit Old Mill Elementary this week just to see how are the funds being spent? What are the, you know, results of that and how that money's being spent? And so the first school they visited was Midway with Principal Meekum. And it was wonderful. Jenny did such a great job. She showed the goals that the school had. She then showed the results and the five year trend data that the school had. She then showed some, you know, some data that was tied to students and how it's changed lives. And then she took her, the auditor around and let them see the money in action, like seeing the interventions that were in place and the supplies and how they were being used. And the auditor made the comment, she goes, I've never walked out of a meeting feeling so, an audit, you know, an audit feeling so positive and thanked, you know, for, you know, having a visit there. And so, so it went so well that the same auditor called me and canceled our Midway, or I mean, our Old Mill meeting for this week. So it, I just think it bodes well that it just goes to show these monies and how we're using them to chase goals, to affect kids' lives, and it's having a, a real impact. And so just that's what you're improving. So I thought it was kind of free to know.
It reflects on our scores, you know, it's all the way up and down. Just appreciate all that you've done. And I think that feeling is at a lot of our schools now. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Garrick.
Yeah, I'm here seeking approval for the same thing for the secondary schools, their final reports for trust lands and just kind of the same thing. Those, those plans have really supported and do those funds support. They're one of the reasons why we've increased and achieved some of the goals that we've set out to achieve and will continue to. You can see most of the money that's spent, we went over this, it's, it goes after personnel that are doing a lot of interventions or sending people to conferences so that they learn a little bit more, but it's invested in people. And we do know that people get students to learn and not programs. And that emphasis is, is really seen in, in the way they put their, their trust lands plans together. So seeking approval for the final reports for the secondary school trust lands plan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Derek. Okay, Dustin. This is consideration to renew securely web filter.
Yes, so this is our web filtering product we use for the student devices for grades kindergarten through eighth. So this is just a renewal to keep that going. This is a little, I think about a fifteen month renewal, kind of offset that towards next summer so we don't have to keep redoing it during a school year. Kind of just give us a little more flexibility moving forward.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, so moved.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Sean Kelly.
Esteemed. Esteemed.
Okay, my first item tonight is the agreement, the contract with our resource officers. We have two of those. One is with the county who provides us with law enforcement at six schools. And then the second one is for Heber City. So my recommendation tonight is, is if you would please accept the agreement as written by the Wasatch County Sheriff's Department and us first. And so my recommendation is, is that we approve that. Again, we have a resource officer in every school. I think we're the only place in the state of Utah that does that. And I think it's a great thing that you guys have accomplished by putting a police officer in every school. It's making a huge difference. So tonight, if you would please pass for the Wasatch County Sheriff Resource Agreement first.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions before we move that? Go ahead.
Will you scroll that, scroll up so we can see the numbers on that for the Wasatch, the sheriffs?
We have more than one at the high school.
We have two at the high school.
I see the cost.
We have a county sheriff and a Heber City police.
That's very same as the city. We play, we play.
The same.
Okay. I, for some reason I missed that in the packet. I saw the city one, but I didn't see that this one.
They're identical in cost.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just going to make the comment. I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I'm going to make it. Um, in rural caucus, we've been working with Representative Wilcox. He's working on a school safety bill and it's been in the works for two years. And some of the people in the room know this, but if anybody's watching online, we are the only school district in the state that has an S R O at every elementary, every middle school and every, and our high school. And we will when we open our second. That's a big deal. And I just want to say thanks to previous boards and to this board and to everybody in this room and administrators, because it's a big deal. And it's noticed by legislators when they're making this legislation. So I'm full supporter of this one.
Yeah, I know previous to my time on the board, Tom did a lot for this. And I think it really has, the whole program's paid off well. It, it looks good in the state, looks good to lots of people in our community, so appreciate it.
Texts our kids.
Texts our kids.
Well, and they're in there interacting with the kids too.
Yeah, they're like their heroes.
Yeah.
And the partnership that we have with both departments is outstanding. They support us a hundred percent. They allow us to talk to the officers and give them direction and what we would like them to do and how we would like them to interact with our students. And the resource officers are really good. And they make sure that the people they put in the schools are qualified and, and the type of individual we want around the kids and the parents, that they're good P R.
How do these officers take that assignment?
Most of them apply for it.
Do they?
Once in a while, they will ask somebody, hey, we, we want you to go there. Would you be willing to do that? But most of them apply because they use it as a, a promotional opportunity. If they put that on their resume, it helps them in promotions, but most of them apply. They like it.
And they interact and they build relationships with our kids.
Yeah. They are, yeah.
So if I can add a little bit to Mary Ann's comment, the, the legislation that Representative Wilcox, he's, he's really worked hard on this. He's a, I see an instance where, where an individual legislator is very concerned about school safety, has a very genuine concern. He's been to several of the, of the places around the country that have, that have been involved in these school shootings. He's, he's, he's met with, with police departments, with principals, with school districts. And really what's coming down in this, in this legislation is every school in the state will be required to have some sort of armed guard at, at each school in, in every district. And the, the language that's being used is the term guardian. So there's, there's really three options that, that each district has to, has to figure this out. Number one is a school resource officer. Number two is a hired security guard, armed security guard, or what they're calling a guardian, where there's somebody on the staff that is, that is qualified or willing to kind of act in that capacity. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of districts scrambling right now to figure this out. And for us to be able to say, you know, this is, this is one bill that as Mary Ann and I have been at the legislature, we don't, we don't have to worry about this one. It's, it's done. The foresight and the, you know, the commitment of the board. And, you know, most, mostly what they find in, in all of these school shootings is, is the people that enter a, a school with a gun, they're, they're, I mean, for lack of a better term, they're cowards. And as soon as they see somebody stand up to them, and especially if that person has a firearm, you know, they're, that's pretty well the end of it right there. And I love to drive around this valley on a morning and see those police cars right front and center pointing towards the, the main road that is in front of the school. And the message, if you're looking for an easy, an easy target, the schools in Wasatch County are not on that list because there's a, there's a guy there and we know, we know about the quality of people we have and the commitment they have to our students. There wouldn't be any running down a hall backwards in our county. I, I think our kids are very well protected. And as been, has, has been mentioned, the foresight for this is, is really proving to have been the right thing to do and, and the visionary thing to do with, with what we're looking at in this year's legislative package.
And it's been yours. How long has it been since we put our, safety committee was two thousand and seventeen?
Yeah, Corey and I, we were a part of that board.
Because you guys came to the safety committee. That's what I was on.
And I, I specifically remember the discussion going from secondary schools to, to the board members with us today at this, at this bench saying, hey, we're not going to leave the elementary kids out. There's no, there's no way that we can discern a, and a difference of importance from the secondary to the elementary students.
Yeah, those kids can't run fast enough. It was, it was the right thing, so great, great job.
Sean, I wonder what the correlation would be having the resource officers, particularly in our secondary schools and how that's affected the problems they have out in the community with high school kids and junior high kids. If that's decreased because they have that officer in there.
I think they would tell you from my time at the high school that it gives them a relationship with students outside of the school that they can deter activities and listen and, and consult. And I, I would, I don't know if there's any hard data about that, but the police officers would tell you them being in the school helps the outside of the school as well with crime and problems and drugs and all that kind of stuff.
I would think it has to.
It would.
And our perception of police just changed. I mean, I watched this guy at Old Mill when I pick up my, my son and he, he just talks to every kid. I mean, and it just, I'm sure these kids have a, a perception of the good that police do from, from this program.
They're not seen as the enemy. They're, they're allies and friends and.
And they hear all the news all the time, how bad police are. I think it's just, it's great.
It's a great opportunity, I know, for young kids to, to realize for my own children. Officer Meekum was the one, for some reason I'm blanking on the officer who's there now who replaced him, even though I see him every morning and I say hi. But they play basketball with them, they play four square with them. They have such a positive interaction with these kids while they're also checking the perimeter, while they are fully aware of what is going on on that campus. And just heartfelt, thank you as a parent.
Yeah, that's a good program.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So I would also ask you to approve the Heber City agreement, which is similar except for the number. And we will make sure that the number indicate is number two, that they provide two officers total, one at Rocky Mountain and one at the high school are the two. And we will make sure it says that specifically.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We gotta, we gotta buy another bus.
Yes.
Your turn.
Time for the bus discussion. So in years past, we have bought two new buses to update our fleet. Last year, we bought two buses to update the fleet. As we continue to grow, we continue to need new buses and we have a rotation to get rid of the buses that are worn out. This year, my proposal is to only buy one bus and buy other vehicles. We need another Suburban. We use the Suburban constantly. I don't have a bid ready for that tonight. They are hard to get. And so I'm searching for bids for a Suburban. With that being said, tonight I would ask you to approve the purchase on state bid contract from Bryson for one Bluebird bus in the amount of one hundred and ninety eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty four dollars.
So moved.
Second. Any other questions?
Yes. What, I know we've bought buses for whatever, but are you seeing those, uh, cost go way up or?
Yeah.
What were they three or four years ago?
They have probably twenty thousand more.
Okay, well, that's not, I mean, I know it's a lot, but it's not. They didn't go from a hundred and twenty five.
Well, during the COVID, they jumped probably fifty thousand. This year, it's, it's more like the fifteen to twenty. They're, they're going up. I think the last time, two years ago, they were about a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
When we were doing them last time, I think it was like.
They're expensive.
One fifty seven.
For sure, but.
Just was curious, I saw that number earlier and I just wondered what they've been doing.
Sean, we're, we get about twenty years out of these buses. We, we have some buses that are.
Yeah. The ones that we surplus have lots of miles, they're starting to rust through. They, they, they get used obviously in this climate. They, they, they get used obviously in this climate, uh, if they're in disrepair, we sell them, we surplus them. And right now, we do not have any buses to surplus because our fleet is still adequate. We have spares, so when a bus breaks down or unfortunately, we've had two accidents where people have. Ran into us, obviously we have to have the bus go out of service and so we have a surplus or a bus waiting there so that. We can continue to transport students. Just so you know, the new buses are all used on the out of uh, county trips for extracurricular. If we get a new bus, they're the ones they use for the trips, they, they get those first.
Haven't changed the design much, have they?
No.
Stay pretty similar.
Bus is a bus.
It's a bus.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, thanks.
Okay, no, no, no.
More, sorry.
Got a few more, so in talking to you about the need for other vehicles. Uh, I have two bids for Chevy Malibus, uh, we're gonna use one for driver's ed and then we will use one as a district vehicle with. The amount of people that have state meetings and BYU meetings, we need a, a vehicle, the Chevy Malibu. So my proposal tonight, we have two bids, one from Labrum and one from uh, Ken Garth. My proposal tonight is to accept the bid from Labrum, which was the low bid. And it is twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Now I'm done.
It is, it is much cheaper and uh, for us to um, own a car than it is to pay mileage. So that was one of Keith's pet peeves over the years is, as people are, need to travel, if they take their own car, they can turn in mileage. And that's, that's a much more expensive um, dynamic than if they can take the district car. And so when we get to the point where we're, we're, you know, we're paying out, that's one indicator that we'll follow is, is there. Are people having to take their own cars places and if they are, then now it's time to add one to the fleet.
Sorry, you decided, no, a- any movement to go electrical in the world out there, no, not yet? Not getting any rebates? All right.
Gas car is so much cheaper, obviously, if you get a brand car for twenty-three thousand. An electric one would be.
Four thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah, good question.
So we won't be buying a, a Tesla anytime soon, huh?
No.
I don't know how those Amazon electric vans make it up here in a snowstorm, but they seem to toot along, yeah, yeah. They're ugly as sin. Anyway, it's off the record.
I think that's on the record.
Yeah. Paul Sweat.
Okay, we would like to uh, propose to the board uh, approval for. A land swap that uh, this will be a three-way land swap, it's as we continue to, to uh, massage our, our new. Um, school site, um, at the new high school, we're, we're working closely with, with M-Tech. Um, the board will recall that we, that we recruited M-Tech to come to the Heber Valley. M-Tech serves all of Ute, the mountainland region of the Applied Technology College serves. Serves uh, Utah Summit and Wasatch County. And uh, you know, there were different areas where maybe the first building on the Wasatch back could have been located, one suggestion was over by the Park City Turn. Um, so we, we're not a, we're not ashamed to say that we, you know, that we did everything we could to bring the first building to. To Wasatch County and, and to be on the same side as our, as our school um, is, is such a powerful thing for our kids. And, and a powerful thing for this valley, um, for those listening or that will listen. Um, M-Tech is not just for high school kids, it's also for community members, any undereducated community members can sign up and. And pick up a skilled um, labor career of, of, of which there's. They're gonna offer almost everything that's offered in Utah County will be offered here at, at Wasatch, so it's an exciting thing. Um, you know, we've just got some boundaries, we're working on straightening up between, between the acreage that M-Tech bought. That is adjacent to the school and right next to Midway Lane and uh, we're still working on some things, this map that's in front of you now. Um, the original purchase from the, the piece that belonged to Mr. Probst, Mr. Bob Probst. If you uh, if, if Stacy can run her cursor, um. We see the canal over to the, to your right Stacy, you see the canal, this piece with the red, with the red patch in it and then on over. Um, to the, what would be to the north, that was all part of the, of the Bob Probst piece. Um, this piece to the, below it in the picture with the yellow on the left and then the building on the right of the canal. That is owned by a gentleman by the name of Larry Hanson. And uh, that will end up being in, in the footprint of M-Tech, so what's being proposed here? Mr. Hanson um, did not want to sell his property to M-Tech in this little yellow square and it would have been the only square out of that whole area. That wouldn't have belonged either to M-Tech or to, to Wasatch County School District. So we had, we had this piece on the backside that will I think someday be used for some of our programs um, at the high school. But, but in order to make this deal work and have everything um, kinda come out in the wash as far as boundary lines go. And, and what's best for the whole, the whole property. Um, the, the red piece is currently owned by the school district, it will go to Mr. Hanson. Um, the yellow piece is currently owned by Mr. Hanson, it will go to M-Tech. And then what the school district will get out of it is the appraised value. Um, of that piece will then be paid to the school district, so we'll get cash. Mr. Hanson gets a new piece of property, M-Tech gets a new piece of property, three-way trade.
Kumbaya.
But it's, it's ground that we figured we could give up to make things.
Yeah, we, we do, we think that it's uh, you know, you see where it's located and, and uh. At, at most this I, I think would been, would have been storage, um, possibly some, some area that the. FFA program might have wanted to use for some of their programs, but we still have a nice chunk of that back there and then. Um, since the ac- acquisition of the McNauton property, if you follow that piece that you can see kinda as, as a, as a farm. Piece, as it turns into behind the canal with uh, with the, yeah, right there where, where the cursor is. That's some new property that, that we've acquired to make sure that our, everything would fit and so, there, there's plenty of room there for, for what we need. It, it shouldn't bother us at all.
And let it be known, cause I get asked probably every day, is are we building the school or are they building the college? Cause we have the sign out in front, it says the college is being built and they, so it's confusing to people. We're building the high school now, we haven't started this part yet.
Well, M-Tech hasn't.
M-Tech has just started this part yet.
M-Tech's looking to get started in the spring, are they?
Spring, really? We were wondering today.
They should, they should finish with or before us, smaller building.
Nice. Okay, uh, let's entertain a motion here.
My motion that we approve the real estate exchange agreement presented by Superintendent Sweat.
Second.
Any else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, anything else, a board report, do we have anything amongst us, Mary Ann, I know you've been diligently pounding it up on the hill. You got anything to report for us?
Um, I'll let you talk about interlocal, um, end of the legislative session, it's gonna be a wild ride until midnight on Friday. And it might go until midnight. Um, lot going on, I sent you guys emails on the call to action bills, school safety, the bill that we were just referring to from Representative Wilcox. Two years in the making, it's the funding aspect that we need in place, so if people can call representatives and. Ask for funding to be included in that, cause a lot of school districts would love to be able to do that, but they need the funds to do it from the state. Um, and then I, just to keep this short and sweet, um, the SJR ten vote for JLC is currently slated for Monday. Um, but we also have a meeting on Friday as well, so check your emails on that, if you have thoughts, share them and I will convey that to the state level. And then we do have a regional meeting on March twelfth, hopefully everybody saw that email. It will have a lot of legislative updates that night that we'll go over um, for our region and for Wasatch. And hopefully we'll know a little bit more about SJR ten and it'll be at the grub that night in Park City at six, so. If we can all.
March twelfth?
Carpool in a district car.
District Malibu?
Yeah. Maybe not the new one, it won't be here yet, but another one, it's six o'clock on the twelfth.
You gotta reserve that suburban.
Get on the list.
Take that new bus over the hill.
Merv to drive it.
Okay, any, anything else, Cory?
I.
We gotta sign.
We're still waiting to get a date on when the interlocal meeting is, but Mary Ann and I are excited to uh, attend that meeting.
Sure you're pumped.
We are, we, we uh, messaged back and told them we were available and gave them some dates and. We haven't been back from it, but we're excited to go. Charing that this year, which entity?
I think it's county, so it's county this year that's chairing interlocal.
The county manager, Mr. Graybo, shared with me that uh, the county will, they've made an agreement that the county will, will take over. That meeting permanently.
Oh, okay.
It'll stay with the county, so I think, I think that's a good move, I think that.
It'll bounce to Midway like it did before or it'll be.
Midway, Charleston, then we had smaller towns, towns as well.
Kim can talk about our uh.
Oh, I'll, I'll talk about a few things, there's been a lot going on in the school and a few of us have been invited. Yeah, like we, they've been inviting us to attend different activities and um, let's see. Director Johnson and I, no, Kirsta, Kirsta and Stacy and I um. Got to participate in the Tempanogus Middle School Spelling Bee and the second place winner for the region. Spelling Bee is Mary Ann Allen's son.
You're all prefrontal cortex, I, he did not tell us this was going on.
Yeah.
Nor did he study for it, no, and he didn't even study, he's like, no, I forgot.
So being number two, does he move on to something else?
He does, he's representing Wasatch at region.
So that was fun, we, I just love being in the schools.
It's awesome.
We, Cory and I went to. We were, yeah, we were judges, all three of us.
It's fun.
Kirsta pronounced the words, but then Cory and I went to the Tempanogus Middle School multicultural night.
It's great.
Festivities and that was so fun, they did such a good job, we had fun.
Yeah, and they feed you well.
And they feed you well, yeah, so there's a lot going on in the schools and I just appreciate being invited to. The activities and just being able to talk to teachers and see the students and see what. We get to see what's going on in the school, like we make decisions up here, but we get to see the decisions in action. Oh, and then tomorrow night is um, we have a Jordan L, another Jordan L listening tour, I guess. Couple of us are going to that.
Where, where is that, where are you?
It's up in the hideout, uh, what do you call it?
Clubhouse?
Clubhouse, yeah. So.
Is that what, like two hours away from here, where is that?
So, it's a long way around the reservoir.
Why we need new buses.
I think Dr. Campbell and I are going to that, right?
Taking a vehicle, it's great.
We should take a vehicle.
Okay, anything else? Sorry it wasn't as sure as my first attempt, but it'll be a little bit longer, okay. Um, we are not having executive session, uh, if like to. Let's adjourn, may anybody motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you much.
Thank you.